I was so nervous. I could stand up in the stadium and announce calls while I was still nervous reading in front of a bunch of people. Hey, Gabe, can you make this a little bit smaller? Right? Thank you for joining us this evening at the Albany City Council Work Session on Monday, December 11th, at 2023 at 4:00 PM. Can we have a call, roll call, the meeting to order, any roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Counselors Smith?
Here.
McGee?
Present.
Novak?
Here.
Newton? Kupczynski?
Here.
Montague?
Here.
Mayor Alex II?
Here.
Counselors present, Your Honor.
Counselor Newton has an excused absence, wanted to let you know that. Gabe, is there any business from the public? No business from the public? Thank you very much. Would anybody and chairmen like to speak to the city council that had not signed up? All right, thank you. First, we have a presentation from CASA of Lynn County. Leslie Myers will be doing a verbal presentation. Now, Leslie, how are you?
Good, thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah. Let me just get this set up real quick. So, um, I am doing very brief. I'll try to keep it brief because I know your time is valuable. But again, my name is Leslie Myers and I'm the Executive Director for CASA of Lynn County. I started my role actually in January of 2023, so coming up on one year in the role. And the mayor invited me to share a little bit about our organization and what we do. We are housed here in Albany, but we serve all of Lynn County. So in case you're not familiar, our mission is to serve abused and neglected children who are dependent wards of the court in Lynn County, otherwise commonly called as foster youth. And we do that through a volunteer force that is compassionate and mighty. So in case you're not familiar, I don't like to assume, because a lot of times when we talk about foster care, we talk about the system that they're all a part of. And so I don't want to make any assumptions. So in a, the reason children enter foster care to begin with is there is a founded case of abuse or neglect. Neglect is by far the most common reason kiddos are in care here in Lynn County. So this means that police CPS, they have emergency care when they're removed from the home. They have a caseworker, they have an attorney, they have eventually a resource family. Those are what used to be called foster families. And that could be kinship, it may be non-relative. They have doctors, therapists, other caregivers, teachers, all of these people involved in their life, usually at a very quick rate, within the first 30 days. And ideally, they're going to achieve some sort of permanency as a result of that, meaning they find somewhere safe to live, ideally returning in reunification with their parent or whoever biologically that they were living with. But oftentimes, we can also see kiddos just in the system and eventually age out. So that's kind of all of those complex systems that young, young kids and older kids have to endure. And CASA, where we come in hand, is where you see the hearts and the hands. At the time when the child is first, when their case comes into court, which is usually within 48 hours of them being removed from the home, a CASA is appointed to the case. And a CASA is a single volunteer who then is with them throughout their entire time in care. And it's a consistent voice, a consistent person seeing their experience. And I'll talk a little bit more now about what CASA is. As an organization, we actually started here in the Pacific Northwest, 1976, out of Seattle. Judge So Coop saw something happening in his courtroom, couldn't put a pin on it, and kind of created this base of volunteers to help serve as advocates that were neither of the state or of legal representation, but someone separate. In 1987, CASA of Lynn County was formed here. And we are currently a part of over 850 programs across the nation. So in every county in the state of Oregon, there is a CASA program in existence. And it's because we are one of a few states, not every state has this, but we have it written into state law that we exist. So we are one of those fun, very smallly funded mandates of the state of Oregon. So ORS 419B requires the judge appoint a CASA to every case that comes into their courtroom. So what is a CASA? What is a volunteer? They are trained and pass a background check. They're someone who gathers information and assesses what's in the best interest of the foster youth. Sometimes people ask us, wasn't that their attorney's job? Or isn't that their caseworker's job? So an attorney is ethically obligated to advocate for whatever their client wants, whether or not that's in the child's best interest. But that's their ethical obligation. Caseworkers, one, are working 30, 15 to 20 cases at a time. And they are also working with the parents and trying to getting the parents into a safe and stable situation for that reunification. And a CASA is just focused in on the child that they are appointed to. They are a legal party to the case, so they need to be prepared to make formal recommendations to the court. They're someone who wants to understand and get to know the child and their needs. And most importantly, someone who can see the child for who they are and not defined by the trauma that that child has experienced. Sometimes people can get caught up on that trauma when really we need to look at, what can we do to help that child move and thrive and become in a stable home? So details currently, as of this morning, when I counted, there were 118 children on our waitlist that currently doesn't, don't have a volunteer. We're only able to serve about 50% of our kiddos with the volunteer base that we have. So we are constantly in a state of recruiting volunteers. Those of you that have known us for a while probably have used to this message. It feels like we get a few steps ahead and then we get more kids in care. So it's, you know, we're constantly trying to balance. So this year, my year, we've hovered anywhere from 50 to the highest. One day, I think we were at 60%, which felt really good. And then we had more kiddos come into care and no one to appoint to them. So what is, how, why, what is the proof that a CASA works? So because we belong to a national association, we are able to do some collection of data. And some of the things that we found outcomes are they're twice as likely to find a safe and permanent home. They're more likely to succeed in school. This is a big one. A lot of our advocate volunteers will really focus on the school situation and what's happening in the school, making sure 504 IEPs, all of those things are being updated, are being addressed, or even coming into fruition. Because a lot of times these kiddos haven't even had those into place. And a lot of them do require those. They are half as likely to re-enter the foster care system. So what that means is they may have had a reunification, and then different factors come up and they have to be removed again. This can be a few months down the road, this can be several years down the road. It just depends on what's going on in the family. And the biggest one, which has kind of already been echoed, just receive more services to address their family needs. Some of the things that our CASAs have been able to figure out over the last year, in fact, is one, was able to find a camp for a specific medical need that a child had. They couldn't go to just any camp, but the child really wanted, at the age of 13, wanted to be able to go to summer camp, something they've always wanted to be able to do. Our CASA was able to find, one of two in the nation, find out they're in Northern California, which is close, figure out a way to get it funded and get the kiddo there to have a typical childhood experience, which is something that we work really hard to with children in foster care because a lot of times they miss out on those typical childhood experiences due to all the other appointments or having to get in family visitation time and things like that. So a lot of times our CASAs will really focus in on that. We had one CASA that worked really well with the bio parent. They got to know them as well. And it turned out this bio parent had never even had anyone rooting for them, anyone in their corner to back them up, to say like, you're on the right path and you're doing well. And we were able to see her graduate from things like family treatment court, which are huge, huge accomplishments, right, for our families. So we are a 501(c)(3). And just as an organization, there's Executive Director me, a program manager. We have an office admin at Point Five. We have three advocate supervisors. So these are three people dedicated to the support of our volunteers. So they help them with writing the court reports. They help them with processing what's going on, help them understand the system, help them brainstorm if they're kind of getting stuck. So we have an equivalent of the three, we have an equivalent of two FTE. We have a nine-member Board of Directors, and I am looking for a couple more. So if you know of anyone. And right now, we're at 56 volunteers. A lot of times people ask how many would be nice. I would say if we had 75 to 80, we could do pretty, pretty good coverage. We have, we have several CASA volunteers who will take on multiple cases. They can't take on any more than three, but we have several that will take on two. And then what our funding structure looks like. So we're about 60% grants and foundations. So, and then we do get a small portion of state funding. That is negotiated through our Oregon CASA network that all of the CASA programs belong to. It's funded out of the DAS budget and it makes up about 22%. 10% through event fundraising and then 4% individual donors, and then we have some investments. So that's our organization. We do have an event coming up, but I'm going to talk about that at the end. But what can you do and why I'm here? One of the ways is, these are just ways to help us make an impact. Volunteer is our biggest need. So if you know people where, who might want to volunteer, it is a bit of a volunteer-heavy commitment, meaning we do ask for about seven hours a month. That's visiting the kiddo and then usually reading anything pertaining to their case. And here's the big one, we ask for a minimum of a two-year commitment. On average, at least in 2021, we haven't gotten 2022 data, but in 2021, in Lynn County kiddos were in care for an average of 22 months. And so we ask for you to be there throughout their duration. But not to scare anyone, I have had a CASA who just wrapped up a case after 11 years. So, but to think one person was with this kiddo and tracking them for 11 years. It's pretty incredible that they stuck around. Grow our network, so through social media, attending our events, invite us to present. So if there are groups, organizations, those type of things you want to be a part of, please invite us in. And then of course, nonprofit, helping us sustain through donations. And so that leads me to, we have a spring event coming up. It is out in Lebanon. And my events committee did tell me they maybe do something here in Albany in, later in the spring, but they didn't give me more details at this point. But this is one we've confirmed, it's a traditional Ask Lunch model that'll be on March 13th. And you all are invited and we'll send out an invitation in the new year as well. I think that is all. If there are any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Or Leslie? So feel free to, is Matt Harrington here? Is it okay for her to share the link on her site so she can show people this meeting that she presented here? Okay. Yeah, is it okay? Yeah. So yeah, is there a specific ask, any volunteers, donations, clothing, anything like that?
Volunteers is our biggest need and our biggest push. I mean, we'll always take donations, but the people to help advocate for foster youth is really going to be our biggest need if we stand a chance of getting, you know, cracking past that 50% mark.
Thank you so much for coming today.
Thank you for the invitation.
Next on tonight's agenda is a public restroom facilities conversation with Director Ladain.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mary. Counsel. Chris Bailey was initially assigned to this and we were going to be a joint duo. She is unfortunately not here today. So I thank you all very much for your patience as I talk through both segments. So we are here to talk about public restrooms. To give you an overview on how we got here, this discussion dates back to at least 2019 when council heard concerns about a perceived lack of public restrooms in the downtown area. One thing that had happened related to this was a request from the First Christian Church to put a portable toilet on their property long-term. They were and are addressing a specific restroom need. And that need is for homeless folks in the downtown area to have a place to use a restroom. At that time, there was also a general discussion at the time about there not being a restroom available for the public downtown. Staff research found that in fact, there are places downtown to use a restroom during typical business hours where other public facilities like City Hall, the courthouse, or a park, or private facilities like Two Rivers Market or other places where customers can use a facility. However, after typical business hours, there are few options for publicly available restrooms downtown. So council at that time directed staff to look into adding a public restroom into the downtown area. Because of funding limitations, the best option to construct a new restroom was at the multimodal station, the transit station, using a federal grant for public transit facilities under which a public restroom would qualify. This grant would cover 80% of the project costs with help from ODOT. The city applied and was awarded the grant. It's important to understand that staff was intending to manage this restroom similarly to other restrooms in our parks, meaning that they would be cleaned daily, once daily, and locked after hours. They were primarily meant to serve as a safe restroom option for travelers using the transit station when the Amtrak restrooms were not available. Due to COVID, supply chain issues and delays, the project took longer than expected and costs skyrocketed. When the project began approaching half a million dollars for a two-seat restroom at the transit station, staff suggested that the project be canceled and council agreed earlier this year. At that time, council asked for staff to come back and have a larger discussion. So that's why we're here today. So what we are asking, and I say we, meaning Chris and myself on behalf of staff, is we want to clear the slate and go back to the beginning and get basic direction and input onto how to define the problem that we're addressing. So to do that, we have a few questions that I'd kind of like to pose and hopefully start a conversation after this portion. So what is the problem that council is wishing to solve? We've heard many concerns that users of the transit station can't get into the Amtrak building because it's not open when their staff aren't present in the early morning or the late evening. So the goal with this one here would be to provide a facility for the public at the transit station open beyond the times that Amtrak is there. Are we looking for a general restroom for the visitors of Albany? Should they be coming through town and looking for a place? Are we, are we looking for an overnight restroom for folks who are potentially houseless? Is there another issue that is trying to be addressed that we, we just are hoping to get some specific guidance so that we can come back well researched and well informed and be able to provide suggestions? So with all of this said, we do have a few assumptions. And that is that first, we do not have city restroom facilities open all night. We don't in our parks. And in fact, our parks, they're open seasonally because our buildings aren't weatherproof and we don't necessarily have, winterized, sorry, weatherproof, yes, winterized, no. And we don't necessarily have staff to be able to accommodate cleaning on a regular basis. We have free standing restrooms in our parks, but they're locked and closed at night also to prevent misuse. We will assume that the same practice is going forward unless council, you all direct us that you would want a restroom that is open 24 hours a day because that'll come with a whole new set of opportunities and challenges for us. With that said, we strongly recommend locking those public restrooms as we see that they will likely be used for sleeping, illegal activity, and not necessarily be a safe environment. And we have some examples in our parks that we deal with on a daily basis. Second, there's an initial capital cost to create an additional restroom facility and ongoing costs, which I'll talk about in a second. Unless otherwise directed, the program that would bear the cost would most likely be the Parks and Recreation Department, as we are the folks who currently manage public restrooms. So it would be important to be cost effective as possible, as you all have seen me at this dais multiple times talking about our use of dollars in our department. So because we're talking money, I want to give you an idea as to what some of the costs are as to not only for installation but operations. So while Chris has been kind of leading this charge when the conversation was part of the Transit Office, it makes sense that it would come to our department for a long-term management. So if we based an estimate off of a restroom, off of the ones at Eleanor Hackelman, which are open seasonally currently, but we anticipate it would get roughly the same type of use as potentially a public restroom. Believe it or not, the total estimate for what we believe it would cost to not only do daily cleaning, both on-season and off-season, perform uniform security lockups, because it's something that you need to have appropriate training and appropriate staff due to the situations that they find themselves in in the evenings as they go and close up. Utility costs, toilet paper, soap, general maintenance and vandalism. The cost is about 30, a little over $35,000 a year for that annual operation for a restroom. I know you might ask, well, what about a porta potty? Typically, the porta potties in our parks are cleaned twice daily during the open season. Not twice daily, I apologize. They're cleaned twice weekly during the open season. If you are looking to do, and this is just a rough estimate, to have a porta potty cleaned daily, it can go anywhere from $70 to $100 a day. So if you think about that, it's about $36,000 to have a portable restroom serviced. And that's if everything's okay, it remains intact the entire time that it's there and no damage takes place. So as far as installation goes, I know that you all heard the bid for the two-stall restroom. As you know, that earlier was discussed at the train station. Even the most basic install, like unit, not even installed, just getting something here that is prefabbed is about $115,000. That doesn't include any site preparation as far as concrete, electrical plumbing, if it's in a wetlands, if we own the property. There's just a lot of factors to, that come into play. So with all of these costs, before we start spinning our wheels and potentially working on something that isn't what council is looking for, we would like to get some direction as to what is the problem you're like, you're hoping to solve, knowing that once we solve that problem, we're also going to need to figure out how to fund it. And that's all I have. I am.
Thank you, Director. Counsel, I'll start with Counselor Smith.
Thank you. When the research was done related to the portable toilet at the Christian church, I don't recall if there was research done about what other cities do for public restrooms. I don't know if that's attached to that report, it just has escaped me.
I can go back and look.
Thank you.
And also, there's also another porta potty by, is it Washington Street? Right in the middle of the block, just sitting there.
That's a construction.
It's construction, okay.
There are a lot of porta potties now that they're okay.
Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes, perceptions aren't right or wrong, they just are. My perception of part of the discussion was that the goal was to end up someplace to have a 24/7 resource for the people to use. And you had mentioned early on, or I think even twice now, that if Parks and Rec was doing the one down with the double party, whatever like that, it was going to be maintained on a daily basis. So I'm trying to figure out why another one, AKA something at one of the parks, wouldn't be maintained on a daily basis.
Sure. Porta potties or brick and mortar restrooms?
Either.
For brick and mortar restrooms, the reason why we don't keep them open 24 hours is because we do find that folks use them as a residence. And that it also provides additional time for undesirable activities to take place. We see that in our porta potties currently in some of our locations and we're having conversations as to how do we improve that. So to help reduce that risk, we close them at night thanks to a locking service that we actually contract with. We do close them in the summer because a lot of our restrooms, well, our restrooms aren't winterized and so the plumbing pipes will freeze. But even for us keeping our restrooms out in the parks, if we were to keep porta potties out there, it becomes cost prohibitive for us to be able to have them serviced daily if it, with the cost that it would take. You might say, well, why does it cost that much? It's because they have routes that they run. And if you're pulling somebody on a route specifically daily, most or twice a week, then it occurs additional costs because of additional timing and the service and the mileage. I don't know if I answered your question.
Pretty much, yeah. My understanding is that the porta potties that we're allowing on private property to what Counselor Smith is talking about, those were the responsibility of the owner of the property, not city. That was one of the advantages and requirements, I thought. So if there's an issue with some of those.
I'm not necessarily talking about any of those. I don't necessarily have information. I'm just talking about the porta potties that we oversee in our department.
Okay, alright.
I apologize.
I was inferring something different then, so I'm okay.
I'll go to Counselor Novak.
Thank you. There is a facility that hasn't been in use in years. It's adjacent to the old courthouse, which is owned by the Letman Company. They're currently rehabbing it to turn it into their office buildings. It used to be 24/7, as far as I know, available to the public of this town. It's an existing structure made of concrete and it's got a fence around it that has it sealed off. No one can go in or out. I'm just wondering if anyone's ever considered the possibilities with something like that because it's already existing. And I'm wondering, is there, has any town ever tried hiring 24/7 security for a restroom to make it available to those who would have nowhere to go in the middle of the night? Or do chants and helping hands let people in in the middle of the night to use their restroom? My guess is no. I'm just wondering if we could work with these agencies to make a restroom available for someone who is unhoused in the middle of the night or at all hours, 24/7, you know? Have we turned over every last stone there is for things we could possibly do to help folks?
And that is a great question and one that I can look more into. Thank you.
I would point out, Counselor Novak, that the property you talk about is private property. So the city has no control over the.
That is, is that attached to the Letman Building?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't. I wondered if the fencing, if that's what that fencing spelled out. But I know that was a public restroom for the city. So, yeah, so it's not, it's part of Letman's property. Okay.
Counselor, do you have anything?
There you go.
Counselor Montague?
So from what I understand is the original conversation that ended up with porta potties was due to a need that was identified. And we did allow porta potties on private property, from what I understand. And I'm wondering, has that met the need that's out there? Has that helped? Is there a further need? I do still believe that there needs to be a restroom at the train station because I have personally had that situation where the bathroom was closed and I was waiting for a train and it was very early and didn't have access to a restroom, which was not fun.
That happened to my son about.
Yeah, so.
Three, four weeks ago.
I, I feel like there's still a need there and I, I know, you know, the costs or whatever. I feel like we, we still need to solve that problem. But as far as downtown, as we grow as a city and more people are visiting downtown and, you know, things are open later, there will become a need for a restroom for the public to be able to utilize if they're not able to utilize businesses. So I think we need to figure it out at some point. I don't know what the immediate need is now that we've allowed the porta potties, but.
If I may. I'm not excited in a sense about the Portland Blues because they plop them in the middle of the sidewalk. them in the middle of a sidewalk. I have an issue with plopping a toilet in the middle of a sidewalk. But have we looked into Portland Loo's? Maybe there's, maybe we could put a Portland Lou at the train station for less than the creation and maintenance, and no, I don't know.
They are more expensive than the base model that I quoted.
Really?
Yes.
Oh my goodness.
The model that a hundred and fifteen thousand will pretty much buy you a wooden-built with a metal roof, not, it's hardened for industrial use, but it's not your concrete cinder block, it is, it is the most entry level, it starts at a hundred and fifteen. But we do have companies like the Portland Lou, and there are actually several others that do prefab really lovely units, but there is a cost associated with it. And if you're interested, we can definitely bring those back so you can get a sense of what that looks like between the manufacturers, but it is more costly.
Thank you, Councilor. Go ahead. Councilor Smith.
I just also am interested in hearing about what other cities like our size are doing as far as public restrooms, and then maybe a little bit larger than our size, right? Just to kind of gauge, at what point will we need to start really thinking about that?
Two things. The restroom at Timberland Park was destroyed by arson in ninety-nine or two thousand, and it was replaced by what we have today. And the, not the director, but Katie Nushasar sat before the council and explained that the reason this drop in place, two-holier, was going to cost so much money, was that it had to be fireproof, bomb-proof and vandal-proof. And it's just a fact that people don't treat public property with respect. Moving on, I think that if we establish a restroom in the downtown downtown at some point in the future, that should be, I believe it should be a partnership between the city and the Downtown Association, Chamber of Commerce, I don't know, but I would like to see that be a cooperative effort because it serves a broad swath of the public. Also, if we have one at the train station, which is still a dream, it should be a partnership with Amtrak, they're there to serve the public as well. And I know they have hours that they observe, and the trains don't run twenty-four hours a day, but there are people there picking up, dropping off, waiting. I would like to see us work out a partnership with Amtrak to cooperatively build, maintain, whatever it takes. I don't think that's impossible, so I'll throw that under the pile. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. One thing I'd like to see is, I think as traffic goes up, the ones that are isolated are the ones probably getting the most damage, you see them less, so people take advantage of them being isolated from the rest of the population. Something downtown where there's going to be traffic, I think, would be better treated than something that'd be often a park. So somewhere where there's going to be traffic, I think that would help protect it from misuse due to being isolated and taking advantage of it sitting off by itself.
Sir?
Yes?
Over here.
Okay, go ahead.
To that point, I'm sure most of you have been to Newport. There, on Ny Beach, there is a really nice parking area and a walk down right on the beach for miles, and they have a public restroom that I have utilized many, many times. And because it is right there in the midst of things and with a ton of parking that's generally almost always full, although turnover because people come and go, it is, for a public restroom, entirely serviceable. It's not fancy by any stretch, but neither is it vandalized, you can use it, you can go in. I don't know, could someone please reach out to the folks in Newport and ask specifically about the facilities in Ny Beach? Because however they are maintaining that, it's decent enough to use. I've been to restrooms where I walk right out and go, I'll just hold it for four hours, but, but that one, you can use it. It's, like I say, I've seen nicer, but it's consistently something that a person who needs to use a toilet can use, just saying.
And there's one similar, I believe, in Hood River, I went out there, actually going out to Pendleton for a meeting, and there's a parking lot, public restroom, people would come and go, even people that were on the street, homeless, they would use it, and then somebody else would go in after them. I think the traffic's going to drive a lot, and the visibility of being in front of everyone.
May I add, they also, forgive me, I almost cut you off, I know, but they also have porta potties on the little boardwalky thing in Newport Beach, and I've never seen them vandalized, they're right there, you can go in. I don't know if they close them and lock them in the middle of the night, I have no idea, but I've been past them, I have used them before. They're not being burned, and there's not paint on them, you know, they're not being, whatever you call that, tagged.
Vandalized, yeah.
Yeah, they're not being vandalized, so maybe we need to talk to the folks in Newport, specifically Ny Beach, because I'm well familiar with that, both the porta potties that are there twenty-four-seven and the public facility that I have used many, many times.
Seaside also has one on the promenade, and like the one in Newport, the one in Seaside is concrete.
Well, thank you, Councilors. Everybody good? Thank you. Yeah, I think you have enough information from us.
Can I confirm?
Yes.
What I think we're going to do? Okay, so the top priority is looking for a restroom option for the transit station, specifically during off-hours. And then a secondary, potentially longer-term project, knowing that's going to take some more everything, is looking at a downtown restroom that would be open potentially twenty-four-seven for all users, shoppers, homeless, folks who are houseless, everything in between.
In a visible location.
Visible location.
Yes.
High traffic.
High traffic, yes.
All right, we'll work on it and we'll come back, so thank you very much for your time and for the guidance.
Thanks, Director. Next on tonight's agenda is code amendments, housekeeping. Officer Shindell, pages three to ten in your packet.
Good afternoon, Council.
Good afternoon.
Sorry.
Good afternoon.
So I'm just going to go over them briefly. I hope I did a good enough, whereas, to explain each one. Nothing's really intended to pull away from the original meaning of the code, just to simplify, remove loopholes or fix unforeseen issues of codes. So the first one, which is on page three. I'm sorry, three's the memo, on four, regards our mobile food unit permits. Currently, it's three hundred and sixty-five days after you get it issued that you have to renew, which becomes somewhat of a tracking nightmare on all of them. In Lynn County and Benton County, both food permits renew on January one, so I figured if we do it on February one, they'll be through their process and they could come do our process, and that would kind of help streamline. Right now, we're spending a lot of time reminding food trucks and, because it's so sporadic. So that's that one. Anybody have questions? Yes.
We'll catch you over here.
Two questions. One, how many, how many permits do we have out currently, do you know?
It's around twenty, twenty-five.
Okay.
Somewhere around there.
Okay, so that won't be, I was just, the other question was, are you prepared for that influx that it's going to come all at the same time, because everybody's going to wait till the end, the last minute?
It's a lot easier, actually. When we first started this program, it started in July, so a good half of ours are already in July.
Oh, okay.
And once you get them going, they're pretty quick. As that program got going and as you drive around, you see there's a lot more applications coming in. So that's when it started kind of spiraling into, not logistics nightmare, but a lot harder to track.
Yeah.
Just to make it more effective and more timely. My plan is to, with your guys' blessing, to have like a bye year, so in twenty-twenty-four, everyone would catch up, and then we'd start in twenty-five February, so some people would get a little extension, but that would make them all fall in line and not have kind of people paying and then having to re-up within a couple months kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's a good idea. Anybody else? Anyone else? I do like the idea about that, everybody at the same time, I think that's good, less stress on you, I imagine.
It definitely helps, and, I mean, with kids in school, I'm usually gone, so then I'm trying to delegate to somebody else when, in July, when those are coming in. Number five, on page five, this one came to my attention while I was talking to the courts.
Well, before you move on, Councilor, any more discussion about the alignment of the, we good there? Give a thumbs up, please. Thank you.
So on page five, came to my attention because of the courts. So when you look at our code, we have a section specifically to dogs and one for animals, and then we have another one for dangerous dogs. When looking at the codes for animals and dogs, the same thing that a dog could do, if a cat did it, it would be a crime, if a dog did it, it's a misdemeanor. So this is really just to marry those two together so that they're all misdemeanors and it's not treated completely separate. So that's really for the change of this and pairing the word between the two codes. Pretty straightforward on that one. Unless you think cats should be crimes still, and horses, and horses and sheeps and all them. Any questions on that one?
I have none.
Okay. On page six, regarding dog-at-large, when you look at the definition of dog-at-large under dangerous dog and dog-at-large under, or just dog code, they were two different definitions, so this is again just marrying the two and having them actually the same when you're looking at different sections of the code, which was causing some confusion for some people.
The both will be dangerous, or?
So this is just dog-at-large, so when they leave a property, the definitions between a dog-at-large under dangerous and a dog-at-large under the dog section were different. So dog-at-large definition is now being paired the same between both codes.
Thank you.
Page seven, regarding junk and trash, this is one that when we moved it to Title Eight, got lost in the shuffle, and that is what we often see when we do junk and trash cases is people will just take their stuff and put it under a tarp, and then now it's cured because it's protected from the weather, which our old code said it has to be within a fully enclosed building. So what you'll see on a lot of properties is what I call Costco garages, and they'll just continually stack them up to where they're past even what development code allows. So this is just to remind what the original code lost in the shift to Title Eight and bring back. You can't just cover it with tarps, you can't just throw it in a tarp garage kind of thing. Any questions on that?
Would this address the situation on Irvine Street with the restaurant equipment?
Yes. Yeah, that's currently, this and along with the building code change that had happened earlier in the year, is, would be able to address that.
Thank you.
No worries. Thank you. And they also are aware of that is being brought, so they're kind of supposedly working on it right now. Page nine is a, one that kind of became a issue after a house fire. We had given some permits, and then we're having a ton of complaints, and in looking at bringing those complaints and looking at if we needed to withdraw an RV permit, because of all the issues going on there, we looked at it and realized, okay, well, that's a city council thing, we were two weeks out from city council and we were two weeks out from their permit expirings, we're just like, well, we have no expedited way to handle this issue, which leads to one thing we see on those properties, if we give them, you know, if they're dumping sewage or they're doing those type of things, if we don't have an expedited process to cure that, it kind of allows that issue to continue on for a couple weeks at most. So that's the reason for that request or edit in the code. Any questions on that one? Okay. And then the last one, again, it's an easy one, as I was talking to some of the tow truck companies in creating of their signs, they were showing me signs if they met the two-inch, which were astronomically large. So they showed me one that they had drafted up with one-inch letters, and it much more matched what you see on parking lots, so that's the request for that change.
So the one-inch versus the two-inch?
Exactly. The last one, which I didn't see in the packet, or I might have missed it, was the fee change. Oh, that's going to be in, never mind.
That's a resolution.
Sorry, that's a resolution. So that is all of them. Do you guys have any questions on any of those changes? Again, they're all minors, just kind of fixes, but-
I just have a comment, I really do appreciate your attention to detail and your diligence in making sure that everything matches and that you clean this up. You could have just let this keep going with some of these in here, so thank you for your attention to detail and making sure that this makes sense.
No, I think all of them, he's prided themselves in having a code that's fairly understandable, and as we go back and adjust things, bringing it back to more transparent is always the key.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We'll see you Wednesday.
See you Wednesday evening. Next on tonight's agenda is fireworks discussion. Fire Chief Shane Moon and Chief of Police, Marsha Harndon. Chiefs.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council and staff. At the end of the summer, or towards the end of the summer, a few of you asked us to do a little bit of research on things that we potentially could do to restrict the number of fireworks that are happening in your respective neighborhoods. But before we get into that discussion, what I'd like to do is just kind of set the groundwork of knowledge that I have, try to give it to you, and then hopefully that'll lead to some sort of discussion. Okay, so let me start by saying, nearly all the fireworks complaints we receive are from fireworks that are currently already illegal. So point one, current Oregon law prohibits the possession, use or sale of any fireworks that fly into the air, explode or travel more than twelve feet horizontally on the ground. Consumer fireworks include fountains, sparklers, ground spinners, and those can be sold in Oregon between June twenty-third and July sixth. Under Oregon law, law enforcement is authorized to enforce the law, and the local fire jurisdiction is responsible to issue the permits for the sale of fireworks and the permits for public display of fireworks. Okay, I'm going to keep going here. So current enforcement process, how it works right now, when a fireworks complaint comes in, depending on the time of the day, it will be routed to either Albany Fire Department or Albany Police Department. In between regularly occurring responses, we send personnel to investigate the complaint. Often by time we arrive, the fireworks have already been ignited and/or someone sees us coming and they stop until we leave. Enforcement is extremely difficult, and honestly, sometimes it feels as though we're chasing our tails. So as far as response data from the fire department, in the last three years, we've had a total of fourteen fires and one amputation from fireworks, to give you the breadth of three years. Those fires, though, range from a simple bark dust fire to a grass fire to a house fire that we had here in downtown. And keep in mind, probably generally, the two root causes are fallout from the fireworks, you generally can't control where the embers land. And then also, for those listening at home, the proper disposal of fireworks is extremely important. You would be amazed at the number of people that put it in their trash bins, your trash bins are generally underneath, or underneath the eaves of your house, your eaves have vents for attic circulation, and fires can very easily get into attic spaces. Okay, what are other communities doing? Just to give you an idea, because you're not the first community or council to grapple with this. So the city of Bend banned all fireworks, and according to their fire chief's anecdotal reporting, there were significantly few fireworks in Bend. He acknowledged that there are people that still use fireworks, but there was an appreciable decline. He stressed that there, to me, that his council was united in their front, and so was most of the community. As you know, Bend has a very high risk of wildfire in central Oregon, so- Uh, as you know, Bend has a very high risk of wildfire in central Oregon, so there's quite a bit more awareness of, of the danger of fire. Okay, city of Eugene recently passed an outright ban this year. Uh, from their chief, they saw increase in the number of fires than their neighboring town Springfield, who did not pass the ban compared to the previous ye- previous year, but admittedly, it was a hotter and drier, um, summer. And, and that probably played into it. He said there were fewer overall fireworks, uh, in Eugene, but probably the same number of currently illegal fireworks in Eugene. Uh, and his stre- or what he stressed to me, which is something that Chief Harndon and I both can attest to, really, it comes down to an enforcement issue. And lastly, uh, Grants Pass has banned fireworks for some time on all days except for July 4th from 6:00 in the evening till 11:00 at night. Uh, Grants Pass from their fire marshal shared that the ban is voluntary, that the police and fire departments have shared their, uh, shared with their council their inability to enforce that, that law. But they do have it in place. So... Please, talk amongst yourselves. Or Chief Harndon, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I would add is, uh, when we looked at our activity here and I looked up the calls from the last July 4th, and we're like, how come we only have six calls? Cause I know we worked plenty of July 4ths in my career and, and including those here in Albany, in, on House in North Albany, so... Uh, what we typically do is, um, on July 3rd or so, we will open what's called a master call. And as calls come in that are just more routine fireworks complaints, we'll just log those into it. And then the dispatcher or indoor, a patrol supervisor will evaluate whether there's a response, cause a lot of times we, we have a proximity, uh, going on and, and usually after dark on July 4th, half the town's lighting it off, so, uh, i- it's tough to track it down. Uh, so we, the numbers are misleading. I can tell you that there are hundreds, uh, of calls that come to us between, uh, July 3rd and July 5th. Uh, and then we'll get them on New Year's Eve as well. Uh, we will respond if there's a significant noise issue, uh, where, uh, i- is causing a noise disturbance of some kind. If there's a party complaint, uh, cause generally what we will see, uh, neighborhoods will have like a block party or, or cul-de-sac party and light out fireworks and that, um, creates a disturbance, uh, we will respond. If there's any property damage, uh, where a report has to be taken or a disturbance, we've had, um, disturbances between neighbors and neighbors of, um, firecrackers and bottle rockets landing on people's roofs and things like that, uh, and we will go out with fire. If fires responding to it, we'll go out as well. Uh, I will tell you, uh, that the number of calls that come in about fireworks versus our staffing on a, um, any night of the week, uh, ranges between seven and nine people. We simply can't cover, uh, that all, so, um, uh, again, it's, it's a game of whack-a-mole, really, running around town. Um, and, and one of the options we have is to upstaff for that, uh, at a cost of overtime, which we, we don't want to incur that overtime cost. So, I will answer any questions that, that council has as well.
Counselor.
Chief, do you have any perception over the years? Are they coming from specific neighborhoods or portions of the community that things are happening in?
Uh, not, not from me, other than, I mean, anybody lives in North Albany, which is mostly residential, probably, uh, and I think where there's dense neighborhood areas, you might see more. Obviously not seeing them as much in the Central Business District or anything like that. Uh, I did come from a, from a city that did do a ban on all fireworks. Uh, and in, in Washington State, they have the authority to locally raise the fine by quite a bit. It wasn't until it was about a $5,000 fine and we started issuing those that we actually saw any progress there. I don't believe we have that authority here, uh, in Oregon, uh, and, uh, and then we also staffed, we would put, uh, teams of four fire marshals and, and police officers out there and they would go to these calls, uh, as much as possible. But it, it also took about five years to see any behavior change in that and, and it's a pretty good cost to the city.
Oh, Counselor McGee and then Counselor Novak.
What's the penalty we have in place now for people using illegal fireworks?
Say, say that one more time.
What's the penalty now that we have in place for illegal fireworks?
Uh, you know, I knew it off the top of my, my, uh, head, but I don't, it's, it's, I think it's $500 or something. I'll have to research and come back to you. It's not as much as you would think, uh, and it's set by ORS.
The ORS is higher than that?
No, it, it, that's set that, I don't think we have the authority to change something unless we put our own ordinance in place.
Counselor Novak.
Thank you. Um, I don't handle loud noises well, and so I'm never a fan of the 4th of July and the 3rd of July and the 5th of July and, um, I, if there is anything we can do for that specific time period, that'd be swell. But as much as I loathe social media, I will tell you, part of my concern in bringing this to your attention is the fact that there's a site called, uh, Neighbor or Next Door or something like that, and I do look at that and I promise you, almost daily, if not weekly, somebody somewhere in this city is complaining about, um, mortars, loud, loud fireworks going off, and it's not anywhere near the 4th of July. I've seen people post and say, "My husband has PS- PTSD," or "My animals, my dog, this is..." When is this gonna stop? And people are complaining and they're putting it in writing on that particular next door and they're from all over town. It's not specific to Ward 1, North Albany, it's, it's, I'm wondering, cause you said you get a few complaints on the 4th of July. Do you not have people, some of these people that are posting on the Next Door site, are they not calling you and saying, "What's going on here? Why, why do we have people blowing things up at this time of year?"
Well, if it's outside of the 4th of July, we certainly, the, the sheer volume of calls is much lower. Uh, again, we, I, I will see those same complaints as you do. Uh, w- we need a specific address and a complaining witness where we can take action and go to, you know, ABC Smith Street, uh, to know that that's where it's occurring, just to say, "Hey, somebody's lighting off, uh, these loud boom fireworks in my neighborhood. Can you send an officer out?" It's gonna drop down on the, on the priority list because we don't have a specific address. So, the more, more specific residents can be about, uh, who's lighting it off and where they're lighting off, then we'll get a better response from us.
And may I submit to city staff that maybe what we need to do is have some sort of protocol so people know, "Okay, so this is what I do if they're blowing things up in my neighborhood in South Albany. This is what I do." I reach out to, I don't think people know necessarily what to do, and so they post about it on social media. And they're, from what I see, and I do see this often, like, it's very concerning. Um, it's happening a lot, everywhere.
One of the things I think you'll find though, Counselor, is that nobody wants to tell on their neighbor. That's the problem. They'll, they'll, they'll say something to them, but to report it to the police, that's a whole different.
Well, they, if they really want it to stop, you know, I think we need to have some sort of system in place and maybe put it on the city website. "Are you hearing explosions in your neighborhood? Are you fed up with..." Because people are fed up, so let's give them a protocol to follow. With, where, cause you just spelled it out. You said they need to call you. They need to say, "This is, I'm in this neighborhood and I'm hearing it over here to my, to the west," or whatever. If they would give you some information, you could follow up, especially since it's not the 4th of July and it's, it's not, you know, the, it's a lesser, the chances of you being able to go out there and check it out are, are greater in December or November or some other month than I, I'm hoping.
Yeah, I, we, so we do, I, I know both, uh, the fire department and the police department have done social media campaigns before, uh, fire more so than us, but we can certainly be very specific about when to call 911 and when not to, and I believe that we've done that in the past. I might be wrong, but... Yeah, I, I think it's important that, one, there's an education piece there. We also talk up the fact that there's usually a high fire danger at that time. And then we do, I mean, I have a dog that I have to drug during that time, uh, as well, so, uh, yeah, I certainly get it. It is, it's, it's almost all consuming all at once on those holidays, so we'll do the best that we can.
Well, what I'm hoping actually too is if we were able to start taking action during other times of year that aren't the 4th of July, maybe that would help word get out that, "Hey, they do something if you blow stuff up now. They started paying attention. They started coming out." Maybe by the 4th of July, this would be a smaller issue than it currently is. If we can let people know that if you're hearing something blowing up in your neighborhood and you're not okay with that, here's what you do. Here's who you call. Here's the information you need to be able to provide to the best of your ability. If we lay that out for them, you know?
Thank you for that. Any other council have anything? Go ahead.
There is, um, really nothing stopping you for edu- in educating public. If you see those posts, there's, I mean, you can post, "Hey, here's the information. If you have a complaint, please call the non-emergency line. This is how you report that," or on the website. So, if you get that information, you could be guiding the public as their representative. You could give them that information and, and help them kind of figure out and navigate.
Okay, I do appreciate that, but what I'm asking for is something official coming from our city staff, from our fire chief, our police chief, our mayor, whomever, you know, to say, "Here's what you do." Yes, of course I can say something and I, I will, but I, I don't even know what the protocol is because all I know is I see an awful lot of complaints about it and I hear it myself.
So, what I do, what, what I've done in the past is post that on our main page, there's a reporter problem or reported issue bubble on the homepage. You can go there and put as much information as you have in there to get it to the right people.
But when would that be reviewed? How, how soon would they see it?
If it's ongoing and it's causing an issue to peace in your home or, or fire, fire danger, or it's causing, uh, a disturbance in your neighborhood, they need to call 911.
So, I had another thing. Are you asking for direction from us today, or what is it you guys need from us today?
I don't know what we're asking. I, I guess what I'm hearing.
Mayor, I, well, this is just to come back to council's request to bring this up at a time before next 4th of July, so you could have a reasonable discussion about what measures might be taken, whether they're statutory or whether they're educational. And I, I would remind people about the video that the mayor did with the fire department to educate citizens about fire dangers.
And that one was, everyone received really well as well.
It was.
Glad to see you back.
But this is just for information.
So, in my opinion, I, 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 I understand that you guys are running around town on 4th of July and, you know, and those, those holidays where fireworks are, um, are let off. I don't think that we need to pursue any sort of ban until, you know, until we dry up enough where it becomes a significant fire danger. Um, I can understand why, you know, places like Bend have that support. And if we saw a, a, a big support from the citizenry to enact a ban, I would, I would entertain that. But until that happens, I don't see, all I see is tying your, it, it's just causing you guys a lot more work that isn't really gonna go anywhere because you are chasing the noise and not necessarily being able to find out who does that. You're doing that now. And like you said, the fireworks that people are complaining about, they are already illegal, so us banning them doesn't do anything but make them more illegal or, I don't know, it's just illegal, so.
One last comment, or one last comment from Counselor Novak and we'll move on.
I just, just to address what you said though, you said unless we have community support. Have you forgotten the people who were packed into this room not long ago, talking about the fact that we need to do something? They, there was a whole group of people here that came to talk about the noise, the, the things blowing up when it's not even the 4th of July.
Said wide.
Pardon?
I said wide, community support. That is a
Local.
handful of people. We are a very large city, so if we had a lot more people that, that were interested in a fireworks ban,
Excuse me.
then maybe I would consider it, but I, at this point, haven't seen any support for that, so I would not.
If I might respond to that comment.
You might disagree and that is fine, but I don't think we should.
I think we've beaten this horse enough. Um, both of you made comments going back and forth. I think we're ready to move on and let, give them some direction if they're requesting that. Let's do that. We're having an argument about.
This is not an argument, sir. May I just make one final comment in regard to this?
Go ahead.
Okay. When someone writes to their representative, that letter represents not one voice, but a number of voices. So, I just want to bring to your attention the fact that when people actually make the effort to come to a council session and sit there, they're not representing one single individual, they're representing a group of individuals. And I think that you are aware of this as public servants. I think you know, I, I hope this isn't news to you. I think
Thank you, Counselor.
there's a lot of folks that care about this.
So, I think what I heard is we'll renew, uh, we'll work on some sort of protocol and, uh, campaign
Yeah, campaign.
and communication to get the word out.
I think Matt Harrington would probably put together a really good campaign as far as having you or you or myself or the council speaking to their constituents on social media and other platforms. I think that'd be a really good start and...
Um, would it be just too much work? I don't know to survey and find out how many people would be interested in a ban and would not? I mean, as you're preparing all this other stuff, so then we would know exactly like what percentage of our community is interested in a ban and those who are not, as you're putting together this campaign, could that be part of the campaign piece as well? I'd really like to know.
That's a good idea.
And Mayor, yes, answered that, one of the, I think, uh, Chief Harndon's question. The state law is the maximum penalty for a violation is $500. You're correct. But there's also a provision that says that if the retail value of the fireworks that they see is less than $50 or $50 or less, then they're, they cannot impose a fine at all. So, just, those are kind of your parameters there, so.
City manager.
And while, uh, the council continues to talk about a ban, I want to remind you of both chiefs' comment that this is largely an enforcement issue.
I agree. So, thank you, chiefs. Appreciate it. Next on tonight's agenda is the Marvin's Garden update, Chief Harndon and Chief Moon.
Well, hello again. Um, well, we, uh, we're approaching, uh, the end of 2023. Uh, just for some history, we opened the two locations, uh, first at, uh, 503 Ninth is one. That's the, uh, tent, uh, location, uh, and then the other one was, I'm sorry about that. Uh, 817 Jackson, which is the car, uh, parking location. Uh, just for statistical purposes, I just ran it today, that's why I don't have it in advance. We've been out to, uh, the south location 88 times and to the north location 56 times. And, uh, Counselor Smith will remember for a present, from a presentation I did a month or so ago, the vast majority of those calls, uh, it's misleading. We are, uh, out there, uh, it's a directive, out there every day on a proactive level. So, our CSOs will go out, uh, do spot checks, uh, and the like, uh, to make sure that we're compliant with the rules that, um, Officer Shindel put into place, uh, to make sure it's a safe, minimally safe location for the people staying there. We have seen some turnover there, um, we, we do enforce the, the code that is there, uh, and try to mitigate the impacts on the neighboring businesses, uh, and there have been some impacts. The city manager and I have met with some of the business owners, uh, and heard their concerns, valid concerns. Uh, but we would deal with it no matter where we put this location in the city. Uh, I will tell you that, that having this location has allowed us to deal with, uh, illegal encampments elsewhere in the city. The mayor's aware of Eads Park, uh, we've spent, the city's spent a considerable amount of time and money trying to, uh, control some illegal encampments there that are impacting crime in the local neighborhood, uh, and we've had some progress there. We would not be able to do that if we didn't have this location. Um, there is a cost to this. I asked, um, uh, Officer Shindel, uh, we just purchased $13,000 worth of camera equipment to monitor the location. Uh, and there'll be a monthly cost to that as well. We're paying $401, uh, and change per month for the porta potties. We increased those, uh, in the number of them there. Uh, and then $457 a month for garbage service. Uh, and our CSOs go out, uh, and pick up loads of garbage that, uh, the, somehow get there, either from the residents or other people drop it by. We do know, um, from the people living there that, uh, other people not associated with camp are depositing garbage there as well as using the porta potties. Um, it, it, there are people coming and going. Uh, the biggest concern there obviously is, is drug activity and we've had some of that. Uh, very quickly, well, uh, it trespasses those individuals from the camp, uh, so that they cannot stay there. Uh, we have a We have an obligation to keep it safe as well as we have a fantastic relationship. And I cannot say this enough. If it weren't for our partners at Chance, we would not be even remotely successful. They're, they're out on a regular basis trying to get and offer services to the individuals there. They offer water from the second chance location and the like. So we could not do this as a city without their assistance. So I'd be remiss in, in not mentioning that. And I can answer any questions that anybody has after Chief Wooten's done.
I'll just give you a little bit of fire information. Like Chief Harden said, sometimes coming up with data for that exact site is difficult depending on when the, or depending on the address that was given when the individual called 911. But we've had less than five medical calls on both sites. And also as it relates to the fire code, we've sent the fire marshal down there randomly two different times to do spot checks. And pleasantly, there's only been just a few code violations that were easily remedied, like fire extinguisher location. I think there was a barbecue in there once that then when we went back the next day was gone.
So Councilor Monica, you had her hand up first.
So I missed, how many calls did you say you had? Chief, pardon?
Eighty-eight calls at the south location and that's since July 1st through today. And then 56 at the other location. And again, I would say 70% or better of those are initiated by us checking out at the location, do security checks or follow-up. We call it follow-up or security checks.
Oh, so some of those are just routine? You go there anyway?
We go there every single day. Out of, so where we would take a case, which where we trespass somebody, arrest somebody, or maybe we've had some domestic violence calls there involving, you know, male, female, Santa location. We've only taken 20 cases at the south location and 16 at the north location. And that could also include any city ordinance violations. For instance, some of the vehicles in the location are broken down, maybe leaking oil or, or so there's a junk and trash issue, something like that. So there's a variety there and we can break it down. But just looking at my list, it's, it's foot patrol, follow-up, security check, and that's the vast majority of the calls.
Okay, so have you noticed, and I know I'm just, I know you probably don't have the data right in front of you, but have you noticed a reduction in calls that you probably would have gotten if, if you hadn't had all these people in the same place, right? Are you, are you seeing less calls in other areas now that we have our people, you know, houseless folks in one space where you can kind of combine those calls?
Tough question to answer.
Yeah.
We, we do still see hotspots. Eads Park was one. Kinder Park is another that we frequently have issue with. But I will also tell you that the interactions with the folks staying at those locations, we know people are coming from other locations to come here because their service is here. So it, it is a safe location, which is drawing people to Albany. And that, that's a double edged sword of a good deed that we did. So we have people coming here from other locations.
I get complaints about that via my email. I do have a question. What's the, the length of stay for a person at Marvin's Garden or the other location?
Well, there, there's no limit on it, but we do, by the nature of the fact that people are homeless, there is a transitory nature to it. I would, I have to go back and ask if there's any original people that have been there since July 1st. They, our CSOs make contact with them every day. And so we would probably be able to determine that. We've probably turned over 20 or so people that have committed violations or out and out committed crimes, you know?
Because my concern, chief, is that people set up shop there. And one guy called and said, I'm a resident of Marvin's Garden. And that's said to me that he planned on being there long term, which takes an opportunity away from someone else to get, to temporarily cap to their situation, either improve or they found support and helped them somewhere else.
Yeah, I believe in, in, Chris can come up and talk about it. The more restrictions we put on that, then it's, we're stepping away from what we believe the law says we have to do. And so the goal is always through Chance and other service providers is to get them out of that location. It is not meant to be comfortable, unfortunately. It's a minimally safe location and we have.
That's my interpretation.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, again, I don't know if we can put a time limit on it without stepping outside of 3115.
Okay.
Chief, this may be a question should be directed to Chance. I'll fire it off. Anyway, we had the recent cold snap. Was there any issues with cold and resources for folks to be in and out of that? Below in the twenties temperature wise?
Not, not that I have heard. We, we did have to caution some committee members that wanted to bring in certain heating devices that would very much put people at risk there. And we asked them not to do that. There's some other things that very well intentioned that are actually making that situation there worse. But I, I would refer that to, to Chance. I know they opened some warming shelters and the like, but I don't know if that had an effect on Marvin's Gardens or not.
Thank you.
I don't see where we responded on the cold exposure during that time to either site.
Thank you. I know I received calls from Emma Dean and regarding the cold, cold shelter or cold warming center. I think City Manager Pete Trotek was also part of that discussion, but it's been a couple of days since I've heard anything from her. I'll check in with her though. Thank you. Yes.
I just wanted to say I'm glad that Councilor Kopczynski asked about the, I was wondering when it was 20 degrees, if people were freezing to death and we just weren't being told.
No, we, we have not responded to any death calls there. And there, there are.
Frostbite, none of that?
Not that I'm aware of. There are fantastic organizations that will bring blankets, sleeping bags, other cold weather gear to the, the people that stay there. The other complicating factor that we continually deal with, again, very well intended, is that we have groups in, in Albany that will bring by food, an abundance of food, which again, that, that is a necessity for the, the folks staying there. But we find that there's a lot of rotting food, which is going to create another issue. So I would encourage our community members to make donations to some of our food bank providers or other shelters rather than drop off food at the location because that just make, creates a health issue there for us. And the, the residents have told us, while it's appreciated, it, it is not necessarily helpful. And so that's why they're invited by Second Chance for meals and, or, or just sack lunches would be best.
All right, thank you, chiefs. Thank you very much. When we'll see you guys again, or probably will see you again. Merry Christmas if not and have a good year. Next thing on the agenda is pavement management funding discussion. Engineer Stacy Billcrash will be speaking to us this evening.
Good afternoon, mayor and councillors. Or maybe it's good evening since it's after five. I'm not sure. I'm going to go ahead and start a PowerPoint presentation. All right, so Public Works Director Chris Bailey was scheduled to give this presentation. She's not at work today, so I am going to try to substitute for her. Luckily she did leave some excellent notes, but please be patient with me. It may be a little bit more disjointed than if she were here. So here is the outline for today's discussion. Today's presentation is the fourth in a series of presentations that we started in August to discuss Albany's transportation network and funding. Today, we are going to talk about the history of street funding, how it has changed in the last 25 years, and then discuss a list, really a long list of possible funding alternatives that could be considered to address the funding gap that we discussed in previous meetings. And if, the next series of slides, I think there's like five or six, I am going to recap some of the points that we made. I want to highlight some of the points that we made in previous discussions. So here is our pavement curve that we just love to, Public Works loves to look at. And we call this our street deterioration curve. The Y-axis shows pavement condition index or PCI. And then the X-axis is the pavement year, the pavement life. And, and what this curve really is showing is that for approximately the first 12 years of a pavement life, it has a very slow gradual deterioration. Then once it goes past 12 years, there's a sharp drop and pavement deteriorates rapidly. It is a lot less expensive to employ pavement repair options in the flat portion of the curve when the PCI is in like good or fair condition above 60 compared to if we wait for the pavement to fail. So any like dollar to like reconstruct a street, it's going to be $5 compared to $1 if we're able to do a cheaper rehabilitation option. Okay, here's the curve again that we like to look at. And what this illustrates, it's our keeping good pavements good strategy. This is the strategy that we have employed on our arterial and collector streets here in Albany. It is consistent with the strategic plan goal to keep the roads that the community uses the most at a PCI of 60 or better. This also shows that making minor repairs in the, again, in the flatter portion of the curve, what it does is you're spending a dollar compared to like if you were to wait for the street to fail and it resets the curve. And so you're, you're spending actually, if you're able to have funding to address pavements when they're in this flatter part of the curve, you're going to save more money in the long run. This table here, well, I guess first you can kind of see the results of the target investments that we've made in arterial and collectors. There's just a very small percentage of these roads that are in poor condition. And then when you look at local streets, you can see that there's almost as many local streets, 52.3 miles that are in poor condition compared to local streets that are in good condition. We have many, many miles of local roads in poor conditions. Most of the local roads that are in good condition are in the newer residential areas where the roads were just constructed within the, the last 20 years. We, I guess one, one positive thing to mention here is we have restarted our slurry seal program. I think we're in our third year now. And so the slurry seal is targeted repair on local streets that are in fair or good, good condition. This map shows the city's arterial streets. And you can see that, well, the magenta and green, that represents streets that are in fair to good condition. And almost all of the arterial streets in Albany are in good to fair condition. There's just a short little segment between Saniam Highway and Saniam Road, I believe, that is in poor condition. Yep. Similar map for collectors. Again, the majority of the roads are in fair to good condition. Of note, the roads that are in poor condition, which is red, that would be Ferry Street. I think it's.
The Pine?
Yes. And then I think.
I get calls about Pine.
Yep, and then 24th Avenue West to Highway 99E. Yeah, and then here is a map showing our local streets. And I guess the first thing that jumps out at you is we have many, many, many more miles of local streets in Albany. Local streets, to recap their roads, that unless you actually live on a local, local street, it's probably not going to be super important to you. These are the roads where, where we live, not the roads that we use to travel to and from school, shopping, work. And you can see, well, if you look kind of in the outskirts where more development has happened in the last 20 years, those local roads are in good condition. They're green. And then in the, the part of Albany that's existed longer, those roads are in poor, red to fair magenta condition. The other thing of note is the bar graph. So instead of having a bell curve, it's an inverted, like a U shape. And so if you were to actually, I don't know offhand, but the, the average PCI of local streets really isn't all that bad because when you average the poor streets with the good, it, it makes the average higher. But if you were to ask anybody in Albany, are you satisfied with the conditions of the local streets? I think most people are going to say no, they're not satisfied.
And it's going to get worse because the delivery vans, the Republic Waste, the Amazon, the UPS, the post office, more and more people are using those local roads to deliver product.
Yep. Unless they start using drones, but I doubt that will happen.
Yeah, it's going to be a while.
Yeah. Okay, this slide just recaps the different revenue sources that we have that are received in the street fund. We have state gas tax, the federal gas tax, which we, we receive as surface transportation block grant funds, our water and sewer in lieu of franchise fees, and then the systems development charges. Almost all of these revenue sources have some sort of a restriction on where they can be spent. With the exception of the in lieu of franchise fees, there are no restrictions on those fees. And this slide, okay, this is the final recap from the previous discussions. And we discussed this in November. This was the funding gap that was identified. Or, yep, 12.8 million. It's, it's a huge, almost unfathomable number, but you know, we, we did want to share it. So for arterials and collectors, we identified that we needed an additional 1.5 million for local streets that are in good condition. So we are spending money approximately 500,000 a fiscal year on our slurry seal program, but we would need an additional 3 million for local streets. And then the local streets in poor condition, that's where that huge, huge, huge number comes in at $8.3 million. So this funding gap was calculated based on a number of assumptions that are outlined in the, the slide. The main one is that we're trying to target a PCI of 60 or greater for all the, the streets. Okay, now the fun part, the history. So this subject has come up again and again. And I mean, going back to the eighties, the, the dollar amounts were less than probably a million dollars. But even back then, that seemed too large to tackle. Now we're here and we're in the $10 million range, still seems like too large of a problem to tackle. And, you know, I guess just to foreshadow, we don't have the solution, but we have some options to consider and discuss. All right. There are some positives. So Albany voters. So Albany voters, oh, shh, sorry, here's the part where I said I might miss out. One of the reasons this does keep coming up is that for many years, maintenance of the street system was partially funded by the general fund. The street network provides a general public benefit, and so that was why that was seen as a good use of general funds for many years. The general fund did contribute money to the street fund up until, I think it was At that point, that was the last time that the general fund transferred money to help cover a portion of the cost for street lights. This was $260,000. There also previously was a policy that natural gas and electric franchise fees, a portion of them, also went to the street fund. This has been discussed with council many times, but changes to the laws around property taxes, in particular, have put increasing pressure on the general fund, which receives property tax revenues. Those revenues have constraints on their growth, and while increases in expenses are not similarly, similarly constrained. So overall, in the past 25 years, our general fund expenditures have gone up, but our revenue hasn't. And what this has resulted in is things starting to get tight in the general fund, and previous policymakers had to, to do what we all do when we have less revenue, and that is cut expenses. And one of the expenses that was cut from the general fund was the transfer of revenue to the street fund.
I'm guessing that goes, the history goes back then to where there was some discussion years and years ago of, of trying to claw back some of that, uh, street funding that was coming from the general fund, trying to get it back. Uh, and it's water under the bridge at this point, but that's where that was coming from, I think.
Yes, yes, yeah. And, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's tough. I mean, previous councils had to make decisions to, to, you know, try to address the, the funding gap in the general fund. And it's just, that's, that's why we're here, or it, it does contribute to a lack of some of the funds, though, that the street fund used to receive. There has been some positive changes to the street fund that I want to highlight. A $10 million general obligation, or, or a GO bond, was passed in 1998 by the Albany voters. This bond specified improvements to 34th Avenue, Elm Street, Saniam Road, and Salem Road. I actually worked on two of these projects. We got great bids for these projects, and we were able to use, um, fun, remaining funds to do additional work. So we did work on North Albany Road, Fifth Avenue, the streets around Heritage Mall, we did an overlay there, Hill Street, and then, um, the bridge over the canal on Fifth Avenue. The other thing that, that we did was, um, we created an in lieu of franchise fees for water and sewer. This was implemented in 1999. And so basically what that is, is we're charging water, soup, and sewer a franchise fee, similar to what we charge the power company, the gas company, for occupying the right of way. And, um, this results in, I think this current fiscal year, we receive 1.7 million dollars of water and sewer franchise fees in the, the street fund. The other positive change that was made is the stormwater utility was adopted, and with the increase in that fee, we're now able to have the stormwater utility pay for storm improvements that are constructed with street capital projects. Prior to having that stormwater utility, the street fund had to pay for all stormwater improvements, which could be very expensive. That average, it was an average of $400,000 of a typical street capital project that we calculated in 2017. Okay, now we get to the fun stuff. So here we are, and we're still not able to make adequate progress on our streets, particularly local streets, because we just don't have adequate funds. So when we talk about funding alternatives, there's, there's basically two paths. One option would be to shift existing resources. The existing resources available to be shifted are really limited to the general fund, and even within the general fund, um, there's limits. So we're really looking at franchise fee, the city services fee, um, that could be looked at. The other option, and it's a longer list, would be to establish new resources, and that would include the GO bond, um, their special loans that you can take out through the state, a tax increment financing districts, um, local improvement districts, a gas tax or a transportation utility fee. So the general fund, as I, we previously discussed, does have a long history of participating in street fund costs, at least up to around 2011. The general fund did pay for street lights for many years. The last amount transferred was 260,000. If the general fund was to pay for half of the streetlight cost in our current fiscal year, it would be about $200,000. The amount, actually, the streetlight cost has actually gone down thanks to the LED light project that was recently constructed. So, so I guess that's another positive thing to share, that we've been able to, to cut costs in the street fund. Historically, some franchise fee revenue, specifically from gas and electric, was received in the general fund, it was a percent. If the same percentages that were previously used were used today, that would equate to about 1.5 million dollars in electric and gas franchise revenue. Last year, the city in total received approximately 6.1 million dollars in franchise fee revenue, and this makes up 14% of the, the revenue that's received in the general fund. Okay, and then I think this is the final existing fee. So this is the city services fee. It was established in June of 2021. This fee is assessed to every developed property in town based on water meter size. The purpose in the ordinance is specific to services provided by fire, library, parks, planning, police, and municipal code. It does not specify public works or streets. The current rate for a single home with a three-quarter inch meter would be $9 per month. There is a low income rate for those who qualify, and last year, the city services fee generated about 2.8 million dollars in revenue to the general fund. This is the warning slice, slide, it's pretty obvious. So wanted to pause here just to note that, you know, we just got done talking about revenue received in the general fund that could be, I guess, sent over to the street fund, but, um, there are no extra funds in the general fund. So any change to, to the funds in the general fund, it's legally possible to shift them, but-
It'll impact other, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's a, I guess it's a zero-sum game, it's going to impact another, another program. And so I guess everybody just needs to be aware that there would be consequences that would have to be considered.
Ready for questions?
I, I have more slides.
Okay, please go ahead.
Sorry.
I thought, I thought the bid was, yeah, okay.
The GO bond, loans, TIF districts, LIDs, gas tax, city service fee, and transportation utility fee. These options can be further broken down into what we call like the discrete funding options. These are one-time funding options versus ongoing funding options, which would be like the gas tax, a city service fee increase, or a transportation utility fee. You know, it's probably a good idea for, um, ongoing maintenance activities that they have an ongoing fund versus like if there's like a big capital project, maybe they're more, um, a general, a discrete funding option would be better suited. So a general obligation bond is a form of debt that the city could take out. It's paid back through an assessment on property taxes. Typically, they have a 10 to 20-year bond life. They do require voter approval, and most commonly, they're used for, because they require voter approval, they're used for, uh, like a community, um, project, something that's going to benefit the entire community. The 1996 mayor's task force on streets, um, they, this is a task force that we've discussed in previous meetings. So they studied the need for additional street funding, and one of their final recommendations was using a series of bonds spaced a few years apart to address the backlog of major street projects. The GO bond was placed on the 1998 ballot, ballot after the mayor's task force, and it was approved. I previously discussed this, it was a 10 million, million-dollar bond, which was able to, um, construct improvements on a set number, number of streets, plus with the efficiencies, we were able to do improvements on additional streets. Other bonds have been attempted, there was one attempted before the mayor's task force was created in 1995, and then another in 2000, both of them, these bonds failed. A $10 million bond at today's rates would cost taxpayers 17 cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. So this would be $51 per year on a $300,000 home. Based on inflation, though, the 10 million in 1998 would be $22 million today, so that's something to, to keep in mind. So there are some low-interest loans available through the state. The state offers loans through the special public works fund, and then the Oregon Transportation Infrastructure Bank. They do have low interest rates, but, um, and they're typically paid back over 10 to 15 years. It's likely that any loan application, though, would have to be approved by the voters. Another challenge would be creating a financial picture that would make a loan application successful. So the state requires that the city identify a repayment revenue source, um, and it would be possible to structure something using an existing general fund source to identify an existing revenue, and the street fund would kind of be defeating the purpose, really. The loan would probably require a full faith and credit pledge by the city, which basically means the city promised, promises to use its ability to levy taxes and charges to pay back this debt. This, this option isn't commonly used. So tax increment financing district, um, TIF districts are created usually around a plan describing the use of the, the TIF funds for a specified project within a boundary, and then the goal is to invest in an area in order to improve it and spur additional future private investments. TIF financing would only be appropriate in specific circumstances where transportation infrastructure could spur development and increase property value.
I'll just leave that as a comment.
It also requires a vote, public vote.
That's right, yes, thank you.
Thank you for that charter amendment.
All right, local improvement districts. LIDs allow a group of property owners to share the cost of improvements that benefit their properties. Essentially, the LID project is identified, and then the benefit to adjacent property owners is calculated, basically the cost of the project. The city pays for the cost of the project upfront, and then properties repay the city over time. Generally, I think, within 10 to 15 years, repayment is guaranteed by a lien that the city places on each property tile, title. So we have used LIDs for some road projects, um, and in some cases, we've even been able to supplement funding for LID projects with grants or with systems development charges to help reduce the burden on benefiting properties. It's, you know, at first glance, maybe it seems like, oh, this would be an option for, for local streets, but, um, because the total project cost for street reconstruction is so high, using an LID alone to fund a local street project in a residential area would really create a high, high burden in repayment for, for property owners. And this slide just shows a summary of the discrete, our one-time funding alternatives that I just discussed. Of these, the general obligation bond is the one that's most commonly used by cities for street projects, and then the other options are, are used less often, but they are possibilities So moving, one hand, this is an existing program, so there would be very little administrative work compared to other options. However, it was clearly created as a charge that would benefit very specific programs that did not include streets. Also, the thing to consider is the underlying mechanism for the charge, the water meter. It really would not be equitable for street work. An example would be a large industrial customer might have a very, very large water meter, but then they may not have a lot of trips generated. You know, if we were to consider increasing the city services fee, along with any of these other options, you know, staff would recommend that a very robust public outreach program be implemented. So fuel tax, otherwise commonly called a local gas tax. This does require voter approval. Albany has made one in 2016. It is one of the most common revenue sources adopted by communities in Oregon that, like Albany, are struggling to fund street improvements. There are 32 cities or counties in Oregon that currently have a local gas tax. They range from one cent to 10 cents per gallon, the most common is three cents. Using Springfield as a guide, if Albany were to implement a three-cent gas tax, and we use Springfield because it's a similar population and they're also located along the I-5 corridor, it is estimated that a three-cent gas tax would generate around $900,000 per year for-
More and more affluent people are going to EVs, so they'd be exempt from it.
Yeah, and, and, and then discussing a gas tax, um, I guess the disclaimer is, we're going to assume that ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation, would figure out a way to, um, replace the, the funding source from the gas tax.
Yes, that's my concern.
By the same token, yeah, by the same token, travelers that come through town, uh, that utilize, uh, uh, gas, et cetera, et cetera, they're not paying anything right now. They would be in that case, they'd be outside of the city, so that's benefit.
Yep.
Well, I just, I, I agree with what you're saying. I've never been, I'm not pro any kind of tax, but sometimes you have no choice, and I, I think I'm personally more open to the idea of a gas tax than I ever have been in my entire life. I also have been doing reading on the whole EV market, and that is not booming right now. They're, the producers of these vehicles are, are not in a happy place from what I'm reading. So I don't, I don't see that we're going to lose an awful lot of people anytime soon to, uh, to EVs. I, maybe some folks, but, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's a huge-
What I was saying, what I was saying was the, the rich won't have to pay any taxes, that's what, and then the state would have to come up with something.
Mm-hmm. I, I see your point, and I think the state is probably working on something, because they always want to figure out how to make everything, you know, they don't want anyone not to pay a tax. they don't want anyone not to pay a tax. They'll find a way to charge people who drive an EV, so.
Counselor Montague.
So didn't I read on the, was the transportation utility the one that you said that in the slides it said, or in the packet, it said it would take, similarly to the water utility and city services fee, would take potentially a couple of years for us to figure it out and set it up? Is that the one? This is the one? Okay. I just want to make sure that. And then I'd be interested in trying to figure out how other cities who did implement a local fuel tax, how did they get it past their voters? Like, how do they approach that, communication to the voters? And how do they do it? Because we can't seem to figure it out yet.
We haven't tried it since we've been on, so.
Not since 2016, so.
Yeah. Tell the truth. We need the money to fix the roads.
For the streets.
Yeah. Any other councils have anything?
Almost to the end. I have, I think, four more slides. So the transportation utility, that's another ongoing funding option. It's another very common funding source that communities in Oregon use. There are 26 cities in Oregon that have a transportation utility fee, ranging from $2.85 to $16.81 per month. This was also a recommendation of the 1996 mayor's task force, but efforts to implement it have failed. And I believe we tried to implement it in 2001, 2003, and 2018. So a very, very rough estimate of what a potential revenue could be if a transportation utility was implemented. And if it was $5 per month for a residential home, it would generate about $1.7 million annually. Again, like with all of these significant outreach would be needed. And for comparisons, when we adopted the stormwater utility fee, that was really like a two-year outreach that staff did and council together to get that passed. And then this table, this shows all of the cities and counties in Oregon, excuse me, Oregon, that have either a gas tax or a transportation utility fee currently. And it is sorted by population. And of these, fun fact, I think there's five that actually have both. The rest just have one or the other. And we have none, yep. So this slide is just a summary of the discrete one-time funding options and then the ongoing funding options. Almost always, the best option is going to be a combination if we can support it. General obligation, for instance, like bonds could fund expensive street reconstruction projects for arterials and collectors that benefit the majority of the community. And they're paid back by a property tax increase, while ongoing costs would benefit from a local gas tax or a transportation utility. Then also, you could look at LIDs or TIFs that could be used to improve specific streets in limited locations in Albany, if it made sense. Using a combination of funding option was the recommendation of the mayor's task force from 1996. What they recommended was a series of general obligation bonds to pay for the large reconstruction projects, and then a new street utility to pay for ongoing maintenance and repairs. Final slide. So next steps. So this is the end of today's presentation. Lot of information. There is a written guide that was included with the council memo that includes all of this information. Again, we're not making any recommendations today, but just want to describe the options that we've identified. Next discussion will be to discuss various strategies that could be implemented for funding. For example, how do you recommend we target local streets? Are there funding options that might work well as a dedicated source of funding for a specific type of work? We will bring back some scenarios and discussion questions at the next meeting that is scheduled in January. So the goal is to, I guess, get enough direction from council then so that we can make recommendations in February so that if we do choose to pursue another funding source, we can start a robust public outreach. Any additional questions or comments?
Counselor Smith.
I'm impressed with the number of options that are available. It's like picking things off the shelf in a grocery store. There are a lot of, a lot of things to consider, and it's a little bit here, a little bit there, and it adds up to real money. So I'm looking forward to the discussion in January.
Counselor Novak.
I just want to say you did an excellent job. You are not Chris Bailey. You did a fabulous job sharing this information. Thank you.
Counselors on the side?
You did good.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I didn't mean to, if anybody took that sideways, I'm not implying that Director Bailey, I'm just saying, this is not your real house, okay? So can I just amend that slightly? Thank you.
We understand what you meant.
Please, it's a compliment, not a slam. Not to anyone. Is it a slam? Thank you. Director Bailey always does a beautiful job, is what I meant to say, but you did also.
So next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I'll start with, I'll start with you.
Why, thank you. I had a feeling you would. So my sister and myself and a couple of our friends yesterday did the Christmas parlor tour for the first time ever, 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 ever. And I wanted to give a massive shout out to the Visitors Association. It was amazing. There were, it was raining, you know? I mean, it was, it's been a wet couple of days and days and days. And I, you know, one of the homeowners said, "We didn't know if anyone would show up, and here's just hundreds of people." And it was beautiful, and it was fun, and it was incredibly well-done, and I hope I get to do it again. But in all my life, this is the first opportunity I've ever had to do this thing, and it was really nice. Lots of people out, lots of beautiful homes and churches and wherever else we went, homes and churches and the library, with the fire, the roaring fire, the only day of the year that the fire is lit at, you know, the Carnegie Library thing, because I almost couldn't think of their name. It was great. So I just want to say that. If anyone hasn't ever had an opportunity to do this thing, I encourage you. I've done the summer parlor tour once, but I'd never done the Christmas one, so go. It was really nice.
Is it still going on, or is it...
No, it was a one-day event. You cannot see it again until next year. But I'm really proud of the folks who put it on and all the people who participated, the homes.
Counselor McGee.
School's out.
She's like, "I'm done." Counselor Montague.
I just want to say, if she's watching, to our fellow counselor, I hope she's having a lovely Hanukkah. And I also wanted to request that we get some instruction on how to send from our new .gov email, or when that's going to happen, or anything. Because I got a request from Kinsey to send via our .gov email, and I haven't been able to figure it out, and I've been through this before at my work. And so I feel like I should know how to do that, but I need some help.
That should be transparent to you, but I will check with Sean Park, and we'll get whatever guidance you need.
Thank you.
Counselor Kotsinski.
Nothing this evening.
Counselor Smith.
I hope yours works the same as mine. Mine just started doing it, just sending it. It just, it appears before your eyes. So, yeah, I should be lucky enough. I wanted to mention what a good time Counselor McGee, and Counselor Montague, and Counselor Newton and I had on the trolley in the Downtown Twice-Around Parade. It was, it was really super fun, and it didn't start to rain until we stopped to light the tree. And then it came down like a monsoon, but it was still fun. It was just a good time. I think the crowd was every bit as big as the Veterans Day Parade.
It was huge.
That's sure what it looked like to me. The entire street at Two Rivers Market and the parking lot, full of people, just packed 10-deep on the sidewalks along the way. Good times.
Fantastic. So I have a few things. The owner of the building that I rent my office in is asking if there's any programs for him that we could use to leverage private, public partnership to install charging stations. So I'd reach out. I'll talk to you about that, Peter. There's also the Homeless Memorials coming up on the 21st of December at Second Chance. It's 1700 or 5:00 p.m. And in the Christmas Storybook Land, I've only been probably four times since I've been here. It was great, but we'll bundle up because the floor, I had two pairs of socks on and boots, and my feet froze. It was, it was that cold in that room, so be careful when you go out there. But it was a wonderful thing, and Fay Creasy, the lady that used to own Circle of Friends Daycare, was there. She's been there 40 years as either Mother Goose or Mrs. Santa. And we sat and talked to her and showed her pictures of the kids, and we shared a hug and tears. But it was so wonderful to see her out there in her regalia and talking about, talking to the little kids. It was wonderful. I had the pleasure of doing a readers' theater at the, at the library. My friends at the library invited me to participate in that and met some really great people. But I want to share a story about Alonzo. I was up talking to the library staff before the event started, and this young man was at the counter working with one of the staff. And I said, "Excuse me, do you like the carousel?" He goes, "Yes, I do." And so I said, "Well, would you like to take your little sister and your mom to the carousel?" He goes, "And my daddy?" I'm like, "Yes." So I gave him four tokens. Well, after the readers' theater, he came up to me, and he had made a button at the button workshop with me on it, and he presented it to me. It was really sweet. So it was a wonderful time of year, and I loved having that readers' theater. And I was nervous, more nervous than being in front of thousands of people at a football game. But it was a great event. And then the Downtown Twice-Around Parade, I cannot tell you, I echo what Counselor Smith was saying. There were so many people, I mean, so many people. And when I asked the kids to come forward to help me light the Christmas tree, it was like, wow! And the kids had a great time. There were so many children, and the rain didn't even bother me. It was just like, it was just Albany, so. And other than that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Novak. I wanted to add my own thanks to Stacy Bel Castro and Kim Ledain for pinch-hitting for Chris Bailey tonight. They did that in less than, less than 24 hours. So much appreciated. You see the chambers decorated. It's the Albany Ski Lodge, as you can tell by looking out the windows in the back. And that was for the holiday parties that we've had. One more will happen in here this, this week. But the team that put that together did a real good job. You should have seen it at the height of its decoration.
It was fantastic.
Wow. And I'll say that tomorrow is the Chambers Youth Job Fair at LBCC, and I'll be out for most of the morning doing interviews, as will several other people. And then Thursday is the Holiday Luncheon at the Riverfront Community Center. So I look forward to hopefully seeing some of you there as we volunteer to serve a meal to folks at the community center. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
What about the community meeting? At the Gary Street Project? It's the 14th as well, Thursday.
Okay.
Okay. Well, with that, our next meeting is, oh, thank you, Peter, is on the 13th at 6:00 p.m. here in Chambers, and I'd love to see you all there, and with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.